Good evening. It is Monday, May 20th, 2013, and I will call this meeting of the Norfolk City Council to order. This is an open meeting. And posted right against the wall as you come in the door there is the actual Open Meeting Act. I would ask you to stand for a moment of silence, maybe keeping in your thoughts. Certainly, I was just watching on the screen of the severe tornado that hit Moore, Oklahoma, with 75 children and staff inside schools they were trying to pull out, so you might keep those in your thought. And now the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll continue with roll call. Coy?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Clausen?
Here.
Murin?
Here.
Moaning?
Here.
Faust?
Here.
File?
Here.
Next, I would ask for approval of the consent agenda as was provided you.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
A motion with a second to approve the consent agenda, if you will please vote. All council members voting in the affirmative. And next, approval of the full agenda with a couple deletions here. First of all, item 30 and item 31, and as well adding to it, an emergency item to the regular agenda. City staff is recommending that the mayor and council declare an emergency and approve amendment number 21 with Black and Beach Corporation in an amount not to exceed $15,000 for engineering services related to inspection, analysis, and short-term remediation design of structural issues related to the roof rafters in the number two million gallon water storage tank at the West Water Treatment Plant. So with that, if I could have a motion to approve...
I'll make the motion.
Second.
A motion with a second to approve the regular agenda with those changes. Please vote. All council members voting in the affirmative. All right. Under special presentations tonight, we will start with a member from the tree advisory board, here to make a presentation regarding a tree voucher program being offered to citizens with the funding source coming from a grant. Three of you right here that could sure be speaking for us tonight. Thanks to have you with us, though. Thanks. If you'll introduce yourself.
How's it going? I'm Jesse White, manager of Romea Industries Garden Center. I am also on the City of Norfolk Tree Board. We recently were, a couple years ago, were the Tree City USA. Last couple months ago, a couple months ago, we kind of got a kickstart from a private fund that decided that we wanted to do a tree voucher program. A lot of communities in the area have been doing things like this. And we kind of did that, and then with some help from, I believe, Don Miller from Keep Norfolk Beautiful, we got a grant, $5,000 grant upon that for this. So we kind of threw together and made a little tree voucher program for the City of Norfolk in the amount of $100 for each household to purchase a tree, up to $100 or more. They spent however much they won on it, but they'll get up to $100 back on the thing within City Norfolk or within a two-mile radius of town. So we got that, I think, last week, week before, and it was announced Friday, I believe.
I saw your ad in the paper, and it's very clever.
It's a very neat deal. It's a very, very cool deal. It's something smaller towns like Wayne and Lincoln and stuff have been doing that for a long time. And it's pretty easy. It keeps everyone, it keeps the responsibility for the people to do this on wherever they want to go. I mean, it's not just coming to my store, it's going wherever the heck they want to go. But, you know, the city doesn't have to mess around with it at all. They got, oh, and it's all privately funded, or not all privately funded, but it's all funded.
Right. How do they, where do they go to apply for this?
There are four different spots. There's my store, there's the newspaper, the firehouse, I believe, and UPS. UPS is a sponsor for that, that helped sponsor the grant. So then we've got funding there for basically six of these $100 grants. As of today, I think most everyone was handed out. I think we've got 20 more left to do, so there's a lot of interest in it.
That's great.
Yeah.
Okay. So do I purchase my tree first and bring it?
Yes, yes, yes. What you do is you go there, you purchase your tree, and there's some deals with it. I mean, you have to follow a certain guideline. You have to make sure this tree is taken care of. You purchase the tree, you have to make sure it's staked, you know, in the wind here, it's pretty crazy. Next day, it'll be blown over. Staking, mulching, use a proper rooting hormone or a soil amendment to get the stuff in our area, and plant it right. With this packet that they get, there's all sorts of information on how to plant these trees and how to take care of them, and things like that. So it's really going through, instead of, you know, here's your tree, throw it in the ground and do whatever with it, you have to make sure and give us permission to come out and check and make sure the tree was staked and properly taken care of, so.
Very good.
Seems like we've done a lot to make sure this is going to be a successful program, and judging by the early interest, I think we've done some good stuff.
I would say so.
Yeah.
Thanks for being here. Any questions at all? I think the tree advisory board has been truly a very positive thing for the City of Norfolk, because we've watched with, you know, the education that you guys have done as well on some of the different disease and such, so.
We have also, and with this, I have kind of volunteered on the 8th, I believe, of the town, 8th of June, at 10 o'clock in the morning, I'm going to be holding a, just a little tree information type of thing, planting, pruning thing at the store, free to attend, just come whenever. But if you got, if anyone wants to know or have any information on their trees or wants to take care of, wants to know what to take care of in any existing stuff, things like that, you know, free to attend, you don't have to do anything, just come over and kind of something we'll do in partnership with it, so.
I appreciate the time you've given to it.
Hey, thanks.
Gentlemen, anything he's missing at all that you want to share? Okay. All right. Next, we have a proclamation for the week of May 19th through the 25th as National Public Works Week. Whereas, public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are of vital importance to sustainable communities and to the health, safety, and well-being of the people in Nebraska. And whereas, such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees from state and local units of government in the private sector, who are responsible for and must plan, design, build, operate, and maintain the transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to serve our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the United States of America to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understand the importance of public works and public works programs in the respective communities. And whereas, the year 2013 marks the 53rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Sue Fuchman, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim this week of May 19th through May 25th, 2013, as National Public Works Week in the City of Norfolk and the surrounding area. And I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contribution which public works officials make every day to our health, our safety, comfort, and the quality of life. Who's accepting this? Ah, Mr. Smith, there you are. Dennis, thanks very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, and everyone else that's involved in all that stuff that goes on, Dennis, every All right, we're moving to the regular agenda. First, I would ask for a motion to consider the approval of an agreement to provide building inspection services for the City of Pierce.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of approval of agreement to provide building inspection service to the City of Pierce.
Second that.
All right. Who's speaking to this? Is that you? Want to just tell us how that came to be, Trent?
Yes. Mayor and council, City of Pierce called a while back, and they were wanting us to just look at a few homes up there, and this is going to be a property maintenance item only, so more than likely, it'll be John Coburn or Steve Nordhugh that goes up there. Typically, with some of the areas surrounding towns that have done this in the past, we don't, we don't get too involved, maybe once or twice a year, three to four times maybe on property maintenance. Metta Grove, we've been there, I just pulled some records, we've just been there a few times, and I think the last time we were there has been a couple of years ago. Windside, we've only been there a couple of times altogether. Tilden, we haven't been there at all, but the agreement is there in place in case they need us. And so property maintenance itself, it isn't real involved. If a community's looking at full inspection services, then it becomes a little bit more involved, so.
Okay. Property maintenance only. Any questions?
Is that, Clint, is that the way that the agreement reads, or that it's just maintenance service only? Because the way I was seeing it, it looks like it's providing building inspection service for Pierce, which, to me, that reads more than just maintenance service, or could mean more than maintenance service.
One of the things, I think, that, I mean, was it...
I think, Clint, down on...
I think that, I think one of the things we've tried to do is to keep these various agreements with these area communities the same. And so if you look at that, we talk about in paragraph four, if you look at paragraph four, it talks about the inspections done with the following code published by the ICC Code, which is adopted by Norfolk. And all that we have in there is the International Property Maintenance Code, the version that's being utilized here. If we were doing the other various codes that the, that Trent and his guys inspect for, we would list all of those there, be it the plumbing code, be it the mechanical or whatever. So that's where it comes to that, that we're just talking about the maintenance part.
Good questions. Anyone else that might have questions regarding this?
Trent, can you just remind us of the towns that have full inspection?
Battle Creek, Madison, Wayne. I believe that's it.
Stanton?
Stanton. No?
Stanton does property maintenance.
Yeah, I don't, typically, we just do property maintenance. And it's just what they request, too. It's not just because somebody's building a house, the city has to request this, so.
The other part that may be...
Am I on?
The other part that may be relevant to that is that when some of those requests came in, they came as a result of, sometimes there's some grants that the communities might receive, and one of the conditions of those grants for some of those building projects are that they have the kinds of inspection services that Trent and his staff provide. So that's why some of those, I think most of the concerns, as Trent said, have all been about the, have been about connotations of the property or when it's, you know, it's dilapidated, but the other ones, many of them come about because of those grants.
More a vehicle for opportunity for those towns.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, please vote. All council members voting in the affirmative. All right. And next is consideration of approval of the proposed downtown vehicle parking district, parking reorganization plan that was presented at the May 6th City Council meeting, and authorization for staff to move forward with formulation of a required ordinance and advertising for bids for material and signage to implement the plan. I'd ask for a motion.
So move, Your Honor. Second?
We have a motion with a second. Any questions at all, council, about this? I do see James is here again tonight, if you have any questions from any citizens after the plan that was presented.
Yeah. Simply here to answer any questions if there are.
You did such a nice job. Last time you were here, I couldn't possibly come up with a question. Great job. Nice presentation.
All right. Appreciate it. That is a lot of hard work by the entire board.
I'm sure.
We appreciate that, the time and effort put into it, James. And I think, like I say, it looks to me like this board is ready to give a... Josh?
James, thanks for all your work. I know you guys did a lot in taking time and effort to gather everybody's opinions at downtown. I think it'd be a great, it's a great problem to have, to need more parking availability for consumers downtown. You guys did it the right way. Thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Great comment.
All right. I have a question.
Uh-oh.
This is kind of a comment, a question for both you and your group, and look at that smile, and for the elected officials as well. One of the things we're doing is we're working on putting together the various ordinances that are affected by the changes that are being made downtown. One of the things that James talked about last week and is in that proposal calls for a $25 fine if they actually get that way, get that far. And I know you don't want to have that be based upon enforcement. One of the questions that we have as we're working with that is currently, if you get a parking fine that's not a snow parking fine downtown or anyplace else on the public street, it's a $10 fine. I know that the chief and I have had some discussions about whether there should be some consistency between, you know, the more, the more, the more of those you get, the more apt you're going to have confusion and whatever. We were looking at, I don't know how strongly the vehicle parking district feels about the $25 fine, or if there's some, or if the $10 fine is enough, or whether that's just viewed as that's a, that's just a parking fee of $10. It's not enough of a fine to prohibit anybody. Or what the thought is about making all of the parking fines $25. Otherwise, we're going to have lots of questions about why they're 25 here and not 10 there, and looking for some consistency. And so I don't know what your comment, if any, might be about that, but that's one of the questions that's come up, is we're working on that.
Yeah. Well, Mr. Shuka, I think your logic is spot on. I mean, that makes perfect sense to us. When we did address that, the board's thought on that was, being the monthly fee is $5, which is pretty nominal, we didn't feel like a $10 parking ticket would carry enough weight with it. Because if I was the honorary citizen in Norfolk, not that I've ever been one, but if I was the honorary one, I might be a gambling man and say, hmm, I could get up to five parking tickets a year, and that would be the total cost of what it would be for $55 in a year, and I'd still be better, you know, better off. So I might be a little more tempted to be willing to risk it. And so that was where our thought process had come with the $25. But we're also on the same page of the point that Clint pointed out, is continuity, uniformity is always a good thing, and not having confusion when other tickets carry 10. Our perspective would be a little bit of a concern, is that too soft in the situation? I don't know, I'm not a professional at this, but our thoughts were leaning towards maybe it was a little soft. That would be my comment.
Clint, do you have any idea when the last time we adjusted the parking ticket fines?
No, but we can find, I don't know off the top of my head. We can find that out, put the, you know, we've done that many times, and put a colon on that and see what that really brings it up to. You know, I got kind of tied up when James said that he wasn't one of those troublemakers.
Now I'm going to get it.
I was going to...
He wasn't one of those.
Honorary, that's right, honorary.
Yeah.
You could also check that, too, right?
Yeah, you could. Yes. There are a few officers in town that would probably do that.
Yep.
We'll certainly do that. And I mean, I think it's good to hear that response, because we're going to be asking the council about that, and so it's going to be a question as we go forward.
I guess that's one thing that I was curious of, if we haven't adjusted it for 20 years.
Yeah, you put a 3% inflation rate on $10, and there's your 25, pretty easily justifiable to the public. So, I mean, just as a thought. I'm not one that's pro-big fines and pro-government by any means, but at the same time, I think it could be definitely rationalized that maybe it needs to be taken up to 15 or 20 or whatever it may be.
We may want to just look at it, too, and like you say, go a little bit. And then if we find out there's a lot of honorary people downtown, then we can go up a little more, but test the waters first before we do it.
But we wouldn't be just talking about the downtown, we'd be talking about parking tickets citywide.
And if we go two and a half times before we do this whole city, we may want to experiment with them, you know, I think.
Yeah, not a bad idea.
I tend to see the group, Dave, I think it's kind of wait and see, see how this plays out. You know, we're enforcing some new regulations here, new rules.
Right.
See how they take hold, and then go from there, so.
To try to answer your question, if I might, Dale, the last time there was any change in that, in that section, which is 24-150 of the city code, was in 1999. And I think that may have been to add the, we had some folks at that time that wanted to have a higher fine if, in their marked parking stalls on private property. And so I think that was the time when there was a $25 possibility if it was signed as such. And if it wasn't that, it's at least '96 or so. So it may be, it may go back, it may go back to the mid-'80s or the mid-'90s. So we'll look at that.
All right.
Other questions?
Thanks for being here, James.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, council.
So with that being said, that's a decision that we can make at another time. What we're doing is just approving the plan that's been placed before us. And okay, so with that, please vote. All council members voting in the affirmative. All right. Next is consideration of approval of Resolution Number 2013-16, approving the 2014 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program. Can I have a motion?
I'll introduce Resolution 2013-16.
Second.
Okay. Randy, you on here?
Yes, Your Honor. You have in your agenda packets on pages 181 and 184, the city's capital improvement program, or CIP. You also have on page 180, the planning commission recommendation. They reviewed this on May 7th and voted to approve the proposed plan. This capital improvement program is really the city's long-term planning tool for large capital outlays. It looks out 10 years, and includes capital items in general costing $10,000 or more. Occasionally, you'll see a smaller item on there for some particular reason, if it's a continuation related to some other item, or if for some reason, somebody really thought they wanted to keep track of that on the CIP. But in general, it's $50,000 or larger. And this program normally doesn't change a lot from year to year. You've got 10 years of data in there. For the most part, those items roll forward, newer items drop off, and on the 10th year out, you put in some new items you see coming in the 10 years out. In some cases, these will get updated for most recent cost estimates, and we may move things up or back a few years. But normally, for the most part, what you see last year is what you see this year with the addition of a few items. These items are then incorporated into our long-term financial plan, and we've done that already, and it shows that the debt service fund should not need a property tax increase to fund these items. And in particular, the public safety tax anticipation bond debt service is well below the 5 cent levy limit, even with the public safety equipment plan to be purchased with these items. And all the Keno items fit nicely into our Keno projections. When you look at this, you'll see some items in there that are new, some of them out in the 10th year, and some of them are items that we didn't get in before that have dropped into the earlier years. If you look at the general fund, you'll see on line three under streets, $150,000 was added for drainage improvements at Victory Road and Sunrise addition for the next fiscal year. In police, they added E911 equipment in this current year. They're projecting they'll get that installed this year, and they think they'll need upgrades to that every seven or eight years. So if you look at out eight years, you'll see that in fiscal year 2021, they have added $300,000 of 911 equipment. They broke that down into two items. 70% of it's going to be coming from wireless 911 funds, and that's $210,000, with remaining 30% of $90,000 expected to come from public safety tax anticipation bonds. Items in the 10-year, 10th year out are $85,000 for a new roof on this building, we're setting in now $80,000 for a dump truck, and $425,000 for a fire pumper, and $284,000 for an ambulance. As you go down to the enterprise funds, you'll see there was several items added. For instance, in the sewer fund, there was a couple sewer lines added, items two and item nine, weren't in before, water pollution control plant, item 13, which is wiring replacement in the ducts, is added for $100,000. And then in the 10th year out, replacing the UV system is added for $250,000. Solid Waste has several items that are new this year, $55,000 coming up next year for an incinerator. And then item six is $100,000 for a couple CHAG trucks in fiscal years 2017 and 2018. And then the 10th year, they have, every year, they've got transfer trailers, and the 10th year, they've got a transfer trailer in for $82,000. Relatively straightforward CIP. And I'd answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Randy. Any questions, council? If not, do you have a planning commission report, of course, Beth?
The Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed and approved the 2014-2023 Capital Improvement Program proposed for the City of Norfolk on May 7th, 2013. It was presented by the accountant to and discussed in its entirety with the planning commission. The planning commission recommends approval of the CIP as presented.
With that, I would ask for your vote. All council members voting in the affirmative, or Resolution 2013-6 is adopted. Okay. We'll move on down then to item number 32, consideration of approval of an interlocal agreement with Madison County for continuing of the funding of economic development.
Head off the motion here.
Second.
All right. I don't see Courtney speak to this.
Maybe Clint can change the recording.
Yep, there are...
This agreement basically reflects the fact that for many years, the City of Norfolk and Madison County have both participated in the funding of economic development, initially through means other than, with a different arrangement necessarily than what it is now. This reflects the, a couple of things. The agreement reflects the changeover from when that economic development function was not provided by the city itself, but rather through a contract with the outside Elkhorn Valley Economic Development Council. And monies from both the city and the county had been contributed to that. If you read through this, this reflects monies that came over to the city when the economic development function was transferred to the city with city employees, and it provides for like contributions to that function through this interlocal agreement with the county, if it's approved by both the city and the county. And it provides for just the various things that are required by the Interlocal Cooperation Act to talk about the reporting that goes to the county, since it's really something that the city's doing, and so on and so forth. So it just kind of updates and would have, updates the existing relationship and goes forward with that. I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions at all, council?
I don't have any questions, but I would say it's a continuation of the groundwork that's already been laid, the good work going forward for economic development that seems to be bearing fruit, and certainly is going to be, in my opinion anyway, of benefit to the city in the future. So glad we get to act on it.
I think one of the things that you want to...
I think one of the things that you want to be aware of, it does provide for increased funding in next fiscal year going forward to reflect the, the things they've been doing and, and the needs for greater funding to make it happen.
Appreciate that, Dennis. Any other questions or comments? If not, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right. Next would be consideration of ordinance number 5255, annexing approximately 6.98 acres, which is the remaining portion of Lot Two of the Norfolk Nursery Edition, and is generally located south of Sunrise Drive and east of the north Victory Road.
I'd introduce ordinance 5255 on first reading.
Second that, Your Honor.
Okay. Dennis, you want to speak to this?
Yes, we've had a request from the property owner of the seven acres to annex the balance of his property. It's currently part of a lot that's half in the city limits, half outside the city limits, located immediately south of the Sunrise Edition there. He has some folks that are interested in development of that property, and it'll just make that go smoother if it's all inside the city or all outside the city. But it's also the area that they're looking at doing a light substandard study on, and this area will be included now that it's included in our, if it is included into the city limits, so.
Any questions or any further discussion? If not, a short title, Beth?
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to annex to said city a part of the southwest quarter of Section 24, Township 24 North, Range 1 West of the Sixth Principal Meridian, Madison County, Nebraska.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5255 carries on first reading only, and that can only go on first reading tonight.
Okay. And then that item of emergency that's been brought before us tonight, we're looking for consideration of approval of Amendment 21 with Black and Beach Corporation for Engineering Services Related to Inspection Analysis Analysis and Short Term Remediation Design.
Your Honor, I would move consideration of approval of Amendment 21 with Black and Beach.
Second.
Okay, Dennis?
Renzi and Sons is currently painting the two million gallon water tank with West Water Treatment Plant. As they got in there and they started sandblasting, we discovered some structural issues with the rafters at their center point in the tank. And we discovered here this week that the extent of the damage is beyond what the engineering division has expertise to deal with. We've worked with Black and Beach for many years on our water system issues, particularly the, the treatment plants and treatment processes. Fortunately, they have a structural engineer that's working on Gavin's Point Dam that would be able to stop Friday morning in Norfolk and look at our situation and give us some recommendations for some short-term fixes that will allow us to get the tank back in service through the summer. And then we'll try to figure out what long-term situation is and, and finish our tank painting and that after the winter water, or the winter, the water summer, the summer watering season. But if it keeps raining, we won't have one, but... So with that, I'd answer any questions you might have.
So is this tank normally taken down every year then, or?
No.
Which one is, is it the one with precast slabs or the octagon roof? Or am I thinking of the wrong spot?
This is the one at the West Water Treatment Plant, it's a steel tank, it's a round steel tank. It has a center I-beam support with a steel ring up there, and these rafters set on, on the ring. In about two-thirds of the rafters, the web on the backside of the C-channel has rusted through. The other third are in good, are in fairly good condition. The reason that that is, is that those, that third was replaced about 15 or 20 years ago when part of the tank, the lateral bracing failed and the rafters all rolled over. Instead of standing up, they were laying on their side, and they were taken out and replaced at that time as a, as the repair solution, so.
Dennis, so this is be the $15,000 basically approval to get Black and Beach to do structural engineering on that particular tank. So the tank basically is just to get it, get us through the summer, and then we're gonna be looking at probably replacing the tank? Is that what we're thinking, or is it?
Oh, I don't...
Is it that far gone, or?
Um, it will not be a tank replacement. The sidewalls and, and the roof panel structures, I haven't seen anything that would lead me to believe that we've got those types of structural problems.
Okay, I'd maybe miss it.
We have structural issues with, what are there, 45?
Forty-six.
Forty-six rafters.
Okay, I guess my question was, is it even worth, if it's that far gone?
No, no.
You know, okay, okay.
This is, this is, at worst, it's 46, 45-foot long C-channels.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
How many are in there?
Forty-six.
Just all of them then?
That would be all of them, but I'm pretty sure that there's probably a third of them that are salvageable, but that would be a worst-case scenario. We're hoping that there can be some fixes to the existing C-channels, but...
Any other questions or concerns, Council? If not, vote, please.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right. Seeing nothing further on the agenda then, we are adjourned.
How about, how about pontoons and just fill the tank, and there you go.
Ah, good idea.
When it goes up, roof goes down. When it goes down, roof goes down.